Forum.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. Hey, Steve Patten.
Hey, everybody. How are y'all?
Good.
How you doing, Steve?
Doing great.
Trying to stay warm.
We might get some rain.
It started sprinkling in my house.
Oh, is it?
I sure hope we get some rain.
Some measurable rain.
That's correct. Hell, there's dust.
Uh, I am back in my man cave and I have not been in here in like three, three months, four months.
Wow.
Yeah, been busy.
There's Mark.
There's Mark, so we need just, we just need Denise on. I knew she was having trouble. Mark, have you spoken to Ms. Swanner? Is your mic on?
His mic is muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. She said she was having difficulties. I sent her another link. She could try to get on that way, so.
It's three o'clock, so we're waiting on her. Right now, right now, we don't have a forum. So we're delayed, we are delayed at the moment. Yeah. Is city attorney on Natasha Brooks? Who do we have on?
Natasha, you on? I am, I am on the call.
Okay, so right now, we're, we're delayed. Um, we're waiting on Ms. Swanner to come on.
Okay.
Can we? Yes, ma'am.
I think it's fine just to wait a minute to see if um, she's able to log in.
If she's not able to log in, what's our next step? Do we, can we continue? Can we not continue?
You can't um.
We just can't take any action?
Take any action.
Okay.
Mayor, uh, this is Michael. Um, Randy is trying to assist council member Swanner um, to get all.
Okay, I got it. Thanks, Randy.
Oh, she's on.
Okay.
Perfect.
Sorry about that.
No, no.
Working, so I'm on my phone.
It's, it's quite all right as long as you're on. Uh, okay, so uh, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is uh, the Odessa City Council Work Session Agenda on Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. It is three oh one. I will start the meeting off with an invocation. If we bear with me, uh, take a moment, I will begin. Father God, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room and rooms, we thank you. Father God, you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. Father God, you have an idea, a vision, and daily instructions for us all. And Father God, you possess us with all talents, abilities, and the framework in which we all can work within. However, only you, Father God, can see the perfect detail in the end of every beginning. Father God, has, nothing is ever in vain. For even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Father God, we ask you to bless this meeting today and all those who are present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. And in Jesus' name, we say amen.
Amen.
And amen. So, now, item one, we are going to consider consideration of recycling services, budget allocation, and contract award to the basin disposal. Mr. Tom Core, uh, Mr. Tom Kerr?
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, thank you for uh, uh, looking at this item with us. Um, I need to start out by saying that I'm really needing to brief you on this, I brief y'all on this item.
Okay.
Really not wanting to press you in terms of this decision and everything. We have a little bit of a chicken and an egg situation that I'll, that I'll kind of explain. Um, so I've, some, some of the council who's been here for a while knows that we went out to do what's a solid waste management plan, and that's ongoing right now. It's very near finished, and we would hope to be bringing that to you within a month or two. Um, that plan has, this, this recycling services has some impact on that plan and this plan, and may have some impact on your determinations of what you want to do with recycling services. So uh, one of the things that we will know is that the reason we're doing that management plan is to uh, to have our fund performance, our operations, and our efficiencies evaluated, analyzed, and evaluated to see how we can best uh, continue the operations of solid waste services and at the best fees that po- that are possible, or that we can see based on the level of service the community is indicating. So hopefully, I'm not making too much verbiage of everything, but anyway. So, in that study, they do evaluate and analyze the fund and its performance based on what we see as services and how we're performing them, and if there's some efficiencies we can gain. So they'll have recommendations on things that we may do to be more efficient, um, as well as they will have recommendations on how the fund performs. And indications are that they will be demonstrating some, uh, that they definitely have some options for improving our costs, but that they also indicate that um, in order for the fund to be sustainable, increases are not unlikely, probably likely, that we may need some increases as we go along. So with that big background, um, when we looked at the recycling services, um, our contract that we have now is basically on a year-to-year basis. It's uh, it's expired as a contract, but it's on a year-to-year basis. And so we look to um, uh, go out for proposals to see what we could do to try and at least maintain the service levels that we have for the city. And so in so doing, um, we put out an RFP back in July and uh, and received some proposals. Another bit of background on recycling is about, I'm gonna say it was about three years ago. Two to three years ago, China and India, uh, but primarily China, they are the number one purchaser of recycled materials. Uh, they, of course, produce the most materials and things, and so they had the biggest market for using recyclables. And so they were the number one purchaser for U.S. products in recycling, as well as as Europe and probably the world. Um, for, for many years, the U.S. has been what we call kind of a single source, uh, a single uh, stream of supply of recyclables. So your recyclables come in, they're sorted and separated, and then the recyclable materials are, are sent to China. However, there's a great deal of, or a great deal, there's a fair bit of contamination in those materials. That starts from whether it be the manufacturer, many other causes, might be something that that was thrown in with it that wasn't supposed to be there, and et cetera. And China has had a, a, a goal for a long time, a standard that they set of pretty low contamination levels. And so about three years ago, they actually implemented that standard, and they stopped purchasing materials uh, to a great or significant degree from the U.S. So the, so the recyclable market basically dropped out. There's really not much money coming in for recycled materials. Uh, cardboard is one that's been a little stronger than the others, uh, some plastics, but as a whole, the recycle market has really taken a, a sharp downturn. Some communities have actually either had to very much de-minimize or stop their recycle services, and um, others have just modified their operations or things a little bit. So we put out that RFP. We pretty much look to sustain our services, but we also asked for some other options in that, you know, what if you do a little more for us than what we've seen in the past? And so we had about four service levels that, that we put, put out in that proposal. The best cost option basically comes down to the service level that we've been providing the citizens to this date. We have, uh, I believe about seven collection centers throughout the community where people can bring their recyclables to those locations. We pick those up and take them, right now, we take them to our yard on Forty Second Street. Um, we have the time machine that's operated by the contractor. We also pick up collections from commercial entities that have recyclables. So we bring all those to our yard. Uh, and the um, entity, uh, our contractor processes them at that location. He separates them, and then he has a baler on our site, and then he uh, we take the waste and take it on to the landfill. The baler is located in our shredder building, a much older building on that site. The roof is of a seriously dilapidated condition. Uh, and it is a very large building. Uh, the cost of redoing that building, the size of it, it, it's not, we don't really use that building as a, in that size and function. So the uh, the processing of those things at our facility is really not a uh, a good long-term option. So in the proposal, we did ask that they would process the recyclables at their facilities. So now, instead of bringing the materials to our yard, we would take the materials to their location, drop them off, and then they would process them there and um, send them to the landfill. Um, or we can send them to, take them to the landfill from their location. Those are the, that's the primary change in the operation. They will still man the uh, the time machine, so people taking materials there, they'll still collect those materials and uh, we'll take them out to their location for processing. When we put the RFP out, we received two proposals. One was from Butts Recycling Incorporated, which is a company that we currently operate with. They uh, that's a different name than we initially contracted with them under, but they uh, they are the ones that operate the time machine now, separate the materials, run the shredder, and sell what they are able to. The other proponent was Basin Disposal. And um, so we had two proposals. We evaluated the costs of each of the proponents, um, based on the service levels that were bid. And the option three, which is uh, in which their facility is not really available to the public, you don't go straight to their location, but you still bring things to our locations and our facilities, just as we have operated them, and we'll haul them over to their processing location, because both of these locations are outside the city limits of Odessa. Um, so they have a, a processing cost uh, to handle those materials. And so, say, under Basin Disposal, that cost is a hundred and twenty-one, nine thousand, one hundred and eighty, estimated for the year, based on quantities of materials we're hoping to achieve. Uh, for Butts Recycling, that processing cost is about a hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Now, we have an additional haul cost, because we have to take it from our area to their facilities. One is on the west side of Odessa, that's the uh, Basin Disposal, probably about five, uh, five to six miles to their location, and then uh, Basin is in Midland. And so it's a si- si- significantly further distance. So we needed to add in our haul costs to go to each of those to be a fair comparison. And so Basin's disposals haul cost would be a hundred and thirty, about a hundred and forty thousand a year, and uh, Butts would be about two hundred, just under two hundred and ten thousand. So that brings us to a total annual city costs um, associated with each of those. Uh, two hundred and sixty, just under two hundred and sixty-nine thousand for Basin, and three hundred and eighty-two thousand for uh, Butts.
Okay.
Any questions as to that so far? I've got one more.
Now, go ahead, go ahead and do the uh, your, your next one, then we have some questions.
You bet. So as, as I indicated, uh, the market for recycling uh, turned down significantly in the last two to three years. And so a little over a year ago, um, our contractor came to us and indicated that he's not able to sell the materials, obviously. And so he's needing um, additional funding in order to operate. And um, it, it really is understandable, because the market just, just had gone completely down. So he asked us to uh, uh, provide some additional funding to him, and uh, we've been paying uh, five thousand dollars a month for their operation of the services. But prior to that, it was pretty much a net zero. In other words, they were able to operate and sell enough material that the city didn't have to pay. But last, a little over a year ago, we started paying five thousand dollars a month. Uh, and they, they have indicated, and they indicated before that, that they would not be able to sustain it. And so that's part of the RFP process and where we are now. All to say that uh, this amount of money is not in our budget right now. This would be uh, more uh, an expense that we don't have budgeted annually at this time. And so we wanted to check with you, uh, one of the things that we want you to, to think about is um, if this is something that you're wanting to continue to fund and support. And um, and so the first question out of the box, I guess, is, is, is this funding level gonna be something that you feel comfortable supporting uh, for recycling as we proceed? And then the next option would be to select a vendor as, as you may find. Now, again, we're just briefing you today. This may be something you want to put off, or at least wait a little bit on, and we can bring the master plan to you, so you can see how it weighs on the master plan one way or the other. Uh, when I say chicken and the egg, we were trying, trying to make the master plan as simple as possible when you saw it, but you may not want to make this decision without knowing what the other impacts are in the master plan.
Exactly. Okay, uh, does anybody on the council have any questions to Mr. Kerr? Mr. Kerr, let me, let me ask you this question. Uh, primarily, what is it that we're, uh, we're, we're picking up cardboard, plastics? I mean, but what's the extent and also the tonnage that we're seeing on a monthly, yearly basis?
So uh, we pick up cardboards, plastics, or we separate cardboard, plastic, shredded paper. Uh, and then we have uh, some, I think, some uh, aluminums and things like that. Um, the uh, primary products that are selling are cardboard, and uh, plastics are not always selling very well. Um, and then uh, uh, shredded paper, I don't think is, is, is making much value at all. So a fair bit of the material is still going to the landfill right now. Uh, but uh, about a thousand tons a year is what, has been what is, uh, production has been in the last few years.
Wow, okay. Um, let me ask you this, uh, how, how many businesses are participating?
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure I have that number for you, but there are, there are quite a few. There are, there are quite a few.
Another question is if we wind up doing, let's say, for example, that we wind up not going forward with this, uh, what's the potential of seeing this out in the community, you know, with illegal dumping? Will we see an increase? I mean, that potential's always there?
Mayor, I would say that that potential is there, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I would like basically uh, be able to take, I, I like to take a look at that master plan, uh, bring it back to the council and, and discuss. I like, I like to be able to see the whole picture.
Yes.
Uh, you know, the thing is, is that we're looking at the substantial cost, you know, we're, we're looking at also the, you know, future, uh, what we're gonna, we haven't even looked at the budget yet, so I want to be able to take a look at that and be more comfortable with it, be, and then uh, uh, we have time. I mean, we're, we're, we're not in a rush to have to make that decision here within the next week or so, do we?
Oh, yes, sir. No, we're not in a rush to make that decision within a week or so. Uh, the, the recycling company may be uh, uh, you know, within a couple of months, I think they would certainly be uh, starting to feel pressed, though.
Yeah.
But uh, um, I think we can have the solid waste management plan to you in, within a few weeks or a month, uh, for you to kind of start to see and see what you want.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any other questions for uh, Mr. Kerr on the, on this item?
Tom, would you also be able to provide, as you said, uh, quite a few businesses participate? Could we also kind of get a list of those businesses that do participate?
Yes, we certainly, I can certainly give you a number of, you're wanting names or.
Yeah, named, I mean, whatever you can get us, I mean, it, it was not too hard pressed, you know, the, the amount that's being picked up, you know, the thing is, we want to weigh of what the participation tonnage to the cost.
You bet.
You know, and, and I think that'll go a long way in determining, you know, whether we continue or not. And with, you know, everything indicating that, you know, you could see the potential of being out there in the community, uh, you trade one palm for the other, so, uh, but definitely, we need to be able to look at the entire picture.
I agree, but that's a, that's really something we need to look at, because uh, if it keeps us from, you know, trashing out our city, that's, that's gonna be really important.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, that's a big issue.
Some of the benefits associated with recycling are hard to quantify, because they're, they have a long term. They can, they can have a long-term benefit, you know, as not adding to the landfill, things like that. Um, I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I could be able to quantify that real well for you. Okay, we can do that. We'll bring back the uh, uh, management plan and then uh, uh, readdress this when we have better information.
Okay, any more other questions on Mr. Kerr on item one? Okay, we're gonna go and move to item two, consider award of bid for algicide of the water treatment plant. Mr. Kerr?
Hopefully, I can make this one real simple. So algicide is a chemical that we use annually, uh, during warmer times of the, of the year. Uh, the temperatures rise on the water in the plant, and so you, you uh, are prone to having algae grow uh, through the plant process, the treatment process. And so we use algicide, uh, we inject it in as the water comes into the plant, and it helps keep that from occurring through the plant. And we do that annually. Um, we did issue a request for bids. We received only one bid this time, a single bid. Uh, it's for fourteen dollars and fifty cents a gallon, and we budget sixty thousand a year for this uh, for this uh, ca- chemical in, in our operation.
Very well. Any question, Mr. Kerr, uh, Mr. Kerr on this item, item two? All right, Mr. Kerr, very well. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Uh, we're gonna move on to item three. Uh, we're gonna consider re-accepting appropriating donation for Occidental Petroleum to Odessa Fire Rescue. Chief Alvarez?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good afternoon.
Um, this item is to consider resolution accepting a donation from Oxy, Occidental Petroleum Corporation to Odessa Fire Rescue. And appropriate, creating those uh, said funds, Odessa Fire Rescue received a donation uh, last month in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Uh, we'll use this to purchase any type of uh, personal protective equipment for our suppression, suppression personnel. And Odessa Fire Rescue requests that this resolution be approved to accept the donation, appropriate the necessary funds uh, from the said donation. And this is something that they.
After us?
This is something that they give practically every year. They've been giving us this grant.
Oh, this is great, great. Any questions, any comments for Chief Alvarez?
Not sure.
All right, Mr. Alvarez, we're gonna move on to item number four.
Yes, sir.
Uh, consider raising and accepting appropriated donation for Walmart community grants to Odessa Fire Rescue?
That is correct, yes, sir. This item is to consider resolution again. It's, it came from uh, the Walmart Community Grants Teams and Facilities. Uh, both of these are, one was from uh, Odessa, the other one was from Midland. Uh, but yes, they did uh, award us two grants in the amount of two thousand and five thousand, for a total of seven, seven thousand. Uh, I think, uh, we also use this uh, donations to purchase any necessary equipments that we want.
This first, 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 first year?
Uh, no, actually, this is something that we've been doing here recently, uh, for the last several years. Uh, they've been very generous with us.
That is awesome.
Yes, sir.
Any questions on item four? Any comments for Chief Alvarez? All right, now the big item five, consider award contract to Midtext of Midland for construction of fire station number nine. Mr. Chief Alvarez?
Yes, sir. So I've got uh, Cruz Castillo on the line as well, and I'll, I'm gonna let him do a little presentation for you guys.
Great.
But, but this is a JSA Architects, the city staff constructing and designing a request for proposal packet for fire station number nine, and released it to its contractors. Following the submission of ten proposals, a committee consisting of uh, JSA Architects and our city staff reviewed and scored the proposals, and selected, selected Midtext of Midland as the recommended contractor. Approval of this item will allow Midtext of Midland to furnish all labor, material, and necessary work to complete the build of fire station number nine in accordance with plan specifications and qualifications for the lump sum cost of five million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. The proposed project date is three hundred and thirty days, and this is funded out of the uh, twenty nineteen certificate of obligations issuance. Um, so that's what we did, is we, we, we scored the whole uh, the contractors out, and uh, this was the, the, what the committee decided upon. It was for Midtext. And really, and one of the reasons that we liked uh, Midtext was their history. They had a good long-term history of uh, projects. Um, I've also got Scott with Building Services, if you have any questions on that, because he was involved in the process as well.
Okay. Is uh, Mr. Cruz on?
Uh, hello, Mayor, this is Cruz. Uh, that, that introduction, uh, well, you council members, uh, Mayor, uh, thank you for uh, allow me to also chime in here behind Chief Alvarez regarding this uh, project. Um, as you know, this station is Station Number Nine, and um, it's already gone out, out for bid, and uh, Midtext is the best value or best ranked con- general contractor for your, for your project. Um, and I don't want to restate uh, too many of the, the highlights of the project with Chief Alvarez, but one of the things that I do want to point out, uh, in the competitive seal proposal, we're able to uh, review uh, it's not only the general contractor, the company's resume for similar projects of size, scale, and scope, but also the project management team, and that we require a list of uh, references uh, that we can also follow up on, and so uh, we were able, uh, able to, to do that, and with the committee like Chief Alvarez said, uh, be able to vet them out thoroughly, um, and uh, notify them uh, as the best uh, um, general contractor or the best value for, for the city. Um, a couple of uh, highlights that I want to, that I want to share, um, we, uh, it could be for a variety of factors, but we found ourselves with the good fortune of having uh, ten general contractors uh, show interest in the project, nine showed complete uh, sealed uh, proposals like Chief said, uh, and that is um, uh, not only, I say it's a good fortune, because um, uh, I think that obviously, if it would have been pre-COVID, or, or even uh, a lot earlier in the year, I think there would have been uh, less contractors interested in the project. Um, and so with that amount of competition, we were able to uh, find ourselves um, in a good position to uh, be below the initial budget um, that uh, we as a team put together uh, almost, uh, almost a year ago. Um, and I do have uh, uh, with Randy or Philip, uh, do y'all have the rendered image uh, to share with the group? I have it on my screen if, if I need to pull it up.
Kind of about the rendering for the uh, for the uh.
Yes, sir, for the station. Yes, just to share, share with the group.
Does everybody have it? Mr. Cruz, I want to ask you a quick question, a few questions. Um, we had spoken before on, uh, briefly on this, on this item, you said something about a in a very important. You said something about a, in a vetting process, you know, one of the things that most times when we have companies that are bidding on these are notorious for change orders. They come in low and they wind up, uh, being habitual, uh.
Yes, sir.
You know, habitual in turn, uh, and putting in change orders which drives off the cost. Right now we are under budget by how much? And also can you talk a little bit to the council about that process that you use and how you wind up landing with, uh, Midtex?
Yes, sir. I can, I can do that. Well, let me speak on, um, let me just share a little bit about Midtex's history to answer the question regarding, regarding change orders. Um, in the, in the past, um, I, I would say that, that Midtex not only maybe for the city, but for, for our firm in terms of getting awarded, uh, construction projects. Um, they have been very fair. They are not known as a general contractor who makes up losses or makes up gains or picks up gains, uh, gains, uh, through the change order process. So I want to say that they are fair. Uh, we don't have any, any documentation of, of, uh, issues, uh, in terms of, uh, change orders during, during the project. And, um, so, so I, I think that they, they come in with the, uh, with the good reputation, uh, regarding, regarding that. And so we know in construction, um, uh, even if you have a little bit of experience in, in construction from remodeling a home or, or building a fence, there's always, um, an item that could pop up, um, that may turn into a change request or a change order that may cost a little more money. What we have in the, in the project is we have a, a design and construction, uh, allowance built in to the five million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar number that will pick up, uh, some of those items once they are vetted by the architect, um, the cities, the cities, uh, uh, oversight team chief Alvarez, Scott Anderson, uh, our assistant city manager and even Mr. Marrow if he, if he's there, um, to be able to review, uh, any change, uh, that may recost, uh, a change in, in, a change of scope that may cause, um, end up in a change of, of, uh, of monies, if you will, or change of cost. And, um, but that allowance will absorb some of those, some of those things, uh, when they, when they happen to come up. We do find ourselves with a good fortune where when we're building new standalone projects, uh, there's a lot less of them. It's usually in, um, in renovations when you can't see behind the wall or know what the structure is doing, that kind of thing, when there's more opportunity for, for unforeseen to come up. So I'm not going to say that we're not going to have any changes, but what I'm going to say is, uh, I feel very confident in our drawings, the review process that we went through with, with fire, uh, and other city departments to make sure we checked all the boxes from spatial relationships, room sizes and making sure, uh, that the fire equipment fits, the IT, um, uh, needs, uh, are met and so forth. And, um, so our goal, and I'm, I'm really confident in this is something catastrophic that's beyond all of us on the call, um, that within our, our contingency allowance, we have to absorb anything to, uh, help ensure that we remain on or below even the contractors, uh, even the contract amount of the five eight seven five. Um, okay. So hopefully that answers the first part there. Uh, the second, the second thing that I want to point out is, um, at the beginning of this, of this process, um, uh, our firm, uh, kind of followed up, uh, on a, on a three-day workshop of fire, of fire facility planning and design. Um, your fire leadership mayor, uh, they also attended the seminar, um, the year before, or they probably attended several of them. And, um, so we were, we made sure that we, um, were, uh, educated in, uh, from the decontamination areas to understanding what the apparatuses are going to do as, as we move along in the future because things keep getting bigger and so, and so forth. And, um, and I, um, I share, share that with you just to also, you know, point out everything that we have in this building regarding, uh, technology, decontamination, the way the dorms are laid out, considering building code, handicap accessibility and everything like that is all current. And even forward thinking in every, uh, in every opportunity that we were able to. Um, but that doesn't mean that we, we designed anything to be, uh, to be oversized. Um, a standard hallway is five feet. We could have made it six feet, but we didn't. Uh, we ensured that we had enough clearance around the truck bays. Um, but we didn't, we didn't, uh, oversize it just to have extra room. And so we were real, uh, real cautious about the, uh, amount of space, uh, allowed for each, uh, function, if, if you will. And, uh, we're, we're, we're very efficient. And, um, and to follow up, uh, to kind of conclude with, with, where I'm going with this is that based on the kind of historical construction costs from the seminars we were going to or the convention seminars we were going to around the country and then looking at what was in, in Texas, we felt confident with the Permian Basin construction, uh, economy of coming up with an early budget of six point five million. Now, of course, this was pre-COVID, uh, pre, you know, pre-COVID and pre-fluctuation, uh, with the economy. And then of course a down petrol economy. And, um, but we, we knew that we needed to be on budget or below. And so, uh, as your local architect in the trenches with various general contractors, utilizing all of the materials that are going in this building and other buildings, we felt there's confidence that we would be able to do that. I'm here today, super proud of my city, super proud of this building and super happy, obviously, that we are even further under budget at a tune of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, what did I, is there a question that I missed or I didn't answer yet?
Nope, you got my questions there. Uh, does counsel, does it counsel have any comments or questions with either Chief Alvarez or, uh, Mr. Cruz or Mrs. Castillo?
Cruz, this is Mara. Uh, thank you and chief and everyone on the team. Um, I like the style of it. What is the timeline? Can you give us a, just a quick timeline of this project?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so we have, we have two things. Uh, once, um, council, council, uh, approves and allows commencement into, uh, into an agreement with the general contractor, um, once, uh, legal or, or the city, uh, passes it on to the contractor, um, we will work with them on a notice to proceed date. Um, and from the notice to proceed date, uh, to the end, uh, of the contract, uh, it will be three hundred and thirty days because that is what the general contractor, uh, has documented in their proposal. Okay? And so there are, um, there are, are a variety of approved, um, uh, days that may be added to a, to the contract. Um, if there is a proof of, of weather delay, uh, long lead, uh, material or equipment delays and things like that.
Right.
As of right now, we are looking at right at eleven, eleven months, once they can get started. Now, what we've done, uh, we normally, uh, require the general contractor to submit the project for permits. Okay? Uh, however, we knew, um, with the, uh, new council members coming on board, COVID and, and so forth. And then a little bit of time it takes legal to get things started, um, I or, or JSA went ahead and submitted the drawings, uh, for permit early. So while we're going through, uh, contract review, council approval and so forth, the, your building official and his team are already reviewing the project. So we can just get real close. So when we hand it over to Midtex, they have what they need to hit the ground running.
Good deal.
Awesome. Very good. Any, uh, any other comments? Uh, any other questions? Miss Swanner, Mata?
And again, uh, Mayor, this is, this is going to be for, uh, station now, which will be out, you know, off of eighty-seven street.
I saw that in the rendering. So you, this is going to be east of, uh, the elementary?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. Looks good. This is replacing which station, sir?
We're, we're adding an additional station with this.
Oh, this is an additional? Uh, basically is this going to, now, we're going out the exterior. Uh, this is going to help in the response times. Um, are we cutting them? I mean, basically, I mean, what, what? Why was this location strategic in, 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 in the location we're at? Cause don't we have one over there on Yukon?
Yes, sir. Uh, we do have one on Yukon. However, with, with the way it's positioned at this point and, and now that Longdale has grown, basically.
Okay.
We're no longer meeting those response times. Uh, so we feel like this is going to really cut down on the response time. And it's going to add personnel to our, 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 our current, uh, department and which is really needs, will help us a little bit more on that.
So you took that into consideration as the growth now only to Longdale, but also to the east, uh, east of the loop as well?
Yes, sir. And that, and again, that's going to help us with, uh, fire station number six, uh, which is currently on Maple or on Brentwood and Granville right now. It, it's going to hit that station and it's going to help, uh, station eight that is currently on, uh, Yukon. So.
Hello, Chief Alvarez. Can you, um, where, where is the personnel going to come for this, uh, for this new fire station?
Uh, so we, we've been given the authority to, to hire thirty and that's what we've done. We're trying to try to get them in the door right now. We, we hired about twenty-six the other day, uh, last month. And so that's going to start helping us, uh, put, get our personnel ready, uh, for the, for that station. But it's, it's been, I mean, unfortunately we've had some turnover. So we're always trying to pick up and trying to, trying to hire some more people. So. And we'll do another rehire test in, uh, in June, I believe. We're scheduled to do, to do another one.
Train them and lose them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, any more questions? Any more comments?
Mayor, I, no questions, but I did want to make a comment that the property that that, the, the location rather, and the site was directed to the city by, um, the Hurt family.
Oh, very good.
There was no cost in the, in the land acquisition.
That's, I, I was going to, I was going to the other, the other question is it, it, that, that goes a long way and bringing, coming down under, uh, coming under budget, which was pretty substantial and hopefully we can stay there as well. Great job. Very good, Mr. Cruz. Uh, Chief Alvarez, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Michael, somehow with this station, we'll recognize that family's donation, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is part of our plan. Uh, we certainly want to, um, thank the Hurt family for their donation. And that is being factored in as we speak.
Absolutely. Okay.
Very generous. Uh, okay, we're going to move on to item six, discuss up, uh, upcoming pool season. Mr. Steve Patton.
Well, it's hard to think about the upcoming pool season with it forty degrees outside. But, um, I was talking with staff and, and, uh, in my backgrounds, Kyle, he's back here with me. We've been having some, um, discussions about the upcoming pool season and with the restrictions that we have and have had in the past. Last year we were in, um, a situation to where it was not advisable to open the pool. We're at fifty percent reduction in the capacity and, uh, I know that we did get a lot of inquiries and some criticisms. Uh, and a lot of those were, well, Midland was open, aren't you open? Well, Midland also had some, uh, pretty restrictive attendance, uh, mandates that they had. So. I'm, uh, and looking at this year, we, uh, really need a timeframe where we need to know by the middle of March to start looking at that, uh, typical Memorial weekend, June opening date is what our typical season is. Also to try to get guards on board during spring break. We need to start looking at, uh, that type of scenario also. Uh, most importantly, what I'm, I know that I was talking to Kyle about this earlier is our recommendation, if we stay at seventy-five percent capacity and above, or, and hopefully things will get better as far as, um, the COVID restrictions. I think that's something that we should consider is opening. Anything below that is extremely costly and is not that much of a benefit to the community. And, uh, our, our, actually our next, uh, slide has got those, uh, capacities on there that are listed there. Thank you, Randy. Say fifty percent capacity at Sherwood and Woodson is only three hundred and twenty-five, uh, people at each, um, facility. And that, and that really does need to have staff involved and included in that number two. So when we're at fifty percent, it's an incredible loss to the city, uh, as far as resources to try to have that recreational opportunity. But at seventy-five percent, we can deal with that and, and, uh, there's no doubt there will be additional costs involved because if we go with the consultant, they're, they're going to look at those lost revenues when we could be at one hundred percent. But, uh, I, I do want to put this out there for, uh, some thought and, and see what direction that we can kind of get into play so that we've got a game plan for this upcoming aquatic season. And that does include our two spray grounds also. We need to get those operational too.
Steve, those capacity numbers, are those for both parts combined?
No, that's each.
That's each. Okay.
Yes.
And Steve, um, how often, I know that Sherwood is a very, very popular facility, but how often are they actually at a hundred percent? I know Floyd Gwynn isn't. And, uh, and but how often are the others at, at full capacity?
The, but always the first, from our opening date until July the fifth, we'll hit capacity almost every day. July the fifth, we go down fifty percent in capacity.
Okay. So really not going to be losing a tremendous amount, even if we are at seventy-five percent still.
That's correct. That's correct.
I mean, I mean theoretically, we're not, we're not losing much of anything over the, over the long haul. So. I think it's, yeah, I'm all for it. Let's keep them going. Yeah.
I just hope that we're able to, you know, I hope how, how our numbers sustain over the spring and summer. Just hoping that we can get back to some normalcy, open these back up.
Yeah. Steve, what, what is that contractor telling you for the cost to run this year?
A little bit higher than what they quoted. They're, they're looking at about two hundred and eighty thousand. And we looked at it in-house and that's going to run us a little bit of three hundred and twenty thousand to do it in-house. So we're still saving a little money if we can go with the outside, uh, contractor.
So what is their justification over it costing more when they're obviously, uh, probably feeling a little pinch from last year?
Well, the, um, the loss of revenues, their first quote was before COVID. And, uh, now the quote is with COVID and they look at those, the lost revenues and, and what they anticipate with lost, lost revenues along with having some additional duties, like more cleaning, uh, crowd control. And that's what they came forth with their justification for going up.
You know, that, uh, you know, I understand and that's certainly their bid. And if they're, if they are, uh, satisfied with it, that's, that's their deal. But I think that's a little bit silly. I mean, we're talking about a facility that there should be a crowd control, uh, in place no matter what, and there should be cleaning in place no matter what. So are they saying before they didn't worry with those things?
I would think that probably, um, just with COVID and everything, it's going to be an overdrive. You know, because they have to clean more, they have to separate more, they have to, yeah, I would just think that, that COVID regulations would bring a little bit more than what would normally, I mean, I'm like Detroit, I would hope they would do that anyway. But I also know that with COVID, there's going to be, you know, as long as we're still dealing with COVID at that time, that there's going to be a lot more cleaning and a lot more separating and a lot more watching than just normally.
Well, and we need to monitor that to make sure they're doing it.
Yeah, we definitely.
Yeah. Steve, what was the number from last year? What was their projected cost last year? Do you have that?
Uh, two sixty-three.
Two forty-three or two sixty?
Sixty-three.
They originally quoted two twenty-three.
Yeah, two. It's, uh, currently two eighty. She was, it was two forty-three, uh, when they looked at it last year. And that was with a, a shorter time space. We had a smaller season that we predicted. Now, we're also in the position that we can negotiate. This is not a set price. And so we have flexibility. We don't have an agreement with this group. So we have the ability to go in there and dictate what their season is going to be and, and for me to negotiate along with Michael to get those prices within what we feel is going to be fair. So there's flexibility in that, in that pricing.
So have you been any thoughts that, uh, going back out for a new, uh, RFP or, um, were you, were you hoping to stay with this company?
We were looking at the timeframe and it's going to put us almost into April. By the time we advertise twice, evaluate the proposals and then come back to award, it'll put us negotiating with another group.
I, you know, I, I don't know. Let us kind of think on it. I mean, just from the information from last year, this, this sounds like a good group. I'm not real pleased at how much they've gone up on their cost in a year. Especially when we didn't even have a contract. We didn't.
That's true.
Beginning with.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and who dictates the, uh, who dictates the, the pay rate for the, uh, lifeguard? Is that by this third party also or? And, and who dictates the, uh, who dictates the, the pay rate for the, uh, lifecards? Is that by this third party also, or?
Yeah. They, they come forth with their, with the proposal, and that includes the pay rate and everything. Yes, they do that. They have that.
Forty-three was with a shortened season, though, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so how much time do we have here, uh, that gives us, uh, a time to think about it? Um, and then also, within your time restraint and also the ability to go in there and continue to negotiate, what are we looking at, Steve?
We need to, we really need to have, um, a game plan together so that, uh, March, we're ready to go.
Okay. First week of March?
Well, February is when we need to make the decision. We need to be able to jump in there and go because we've got spring break coming. We would have to advertise to get, uh, everybody that's on spring break, coaches and all the students that wanna come work for us. We'd like to get a hold of them in pre-spring break so that they can come in and apply.
Okay.
I think February's gonna have to be, uh.
Yeah.
Or go.
Okay. So basically, first week, uh, last weekend, uh, fir- first part of February?
Yes, that's correct.
I think we can, I think we can get our heads together and come up with something. Then we can get to there.
And, and I'll, um, talk to her some more about pricing.
Yeah.
Get a better, a little bit more, um, I think, accurate on, on her pricing, something that's gonna be logical and not as high.
Yeah.
Nope, I, I, I'm absolutely right. I mean, I, I, I could go with, uh, uh, Dietrich. I mean, uh, you know, you guys handled it last year, uh, in a shortened season. We're seeing quite a, quite a bit of an increase and see what you can, uh, see what you can continue to negotiate between now and, and, and early part of, uh, February.
Yeah.
Okay.
Get out because actually, and, and I, I may not be remembering this right, Steve, so, uh, feel free to correct me, but when we, when they first sent that and we went with this company, that was pre-COVID.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, you know, this is a pretty substantial increase from what they originally proposed, and that did not include a shortened season. Okay. You know? I, is that?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's what I was remembering is that, I mean, I know that y'all came back and y'all looked at another scenario with a shortened season. But, I mean, just saying, they've been coming back with, and, and I can understand, kinda going with what Mara said, you know, there, there should be more expectations for them on cleaning and stuff uh, this year. And I, and so I could, I can understand some of an increase for cleaning supplies, you know, in that capacity. I can see that. I just feel like they have, um, you know, they've gone a little crazy on, um, their pricing. And so, yeah, if you don't mind, just check with her and make sure that that's what they really wanna propose, and then we'll have to decide from there. Okay?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Definitely. And we just needed some little bit of a direction, and I wanted y'all to hear from both Kyle and I that we were looking at opening this year because of the seventy-five percent that it's probably in everybody's best interest that, um, and, and I know your constituents are probably gonna be asking if Floyd Gwynn doesn't open and all the other pools like we did last year.
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna be a real problem for us, and, uh, I'd like to attack it now.
Yeah, and I, and I do believe that we can open those pools, you know, one way or the other. You know, I mean, hopefully this company will come back and have, and it's a little bit more tasteful, you know, for us, and, um, and we can go forward. I mean, if it's not, because, you know, we are also in a financial situation, you know, and so going up on our prices in a, in an incredibly lean year, you know, for us is, uh, is asking quite a bit. And so we want the pools open, but they're not our only, they're not our only option. Okay?
Any more questions? Any more comments from Mr. Patton? Any more direction? Okay. Steve, thank you very much, and we'll, we'll be hearing from you. Okay, we're gonna go to item seven, discuss possible, uh, council retreat. Uh, Mr. Marrero?
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Um, thank you. Um, the item that I wanted to discuss with the, the council this afternoon is this idea of a city council retreat, or perhaps better stated, strategic planning session. Um, first of all, let me just say I'm not advocating that we go anywhere other than Odessa to have a retreat. Um, we'll certainly wanna stay here. But I think it has, uh, several purposes, uh, Mayor and Council. I think, uh, number one, it, uh, will provide a greater understanding, especially for some of the newer council members, and certainly serve as a refresher to existing council on city council procedures and, uh, policies. So it'll be a, a, a session that's geared around a, a number of things that will be important for any new council member and certainly refresh, uh, the councils, council members that have been around a while. But moreover, Mayor, it really allows us, allows you, the city council, to formulate a shared vision for the city. Um, you all know, there are a lot of major issues ahead of us, ranging from infrastructure to quality of life to the economy. Uh, a retreat like this will allow the council to really define a strategic direction, if you will, uh, and allow us to develop high-level goals and objectives, not only for you as a council, but certainly will be incredibly helpful for us as a staff to know the direction that the council wants to go in. I see this as an extension of, of the master planning that we've done over the last couple of years. Uh, that would include, uh, for example, the water sewer master plan, the traffic and road master plan. Tom mentioned a, a solid waste master plan, a drainage master plan at some point in the future. But this is part of, I think, that, that, that planning process that this council and, and certainly councils in the past have, at least for the last couple of years, been on a direction to make sure that we have um, a good idea of where we wanna go as a community in the future. Um, I, I really wanted to have a very open-ended discussion with you as a council as to what might be important to discuss. I, um, I put together some thoughts, but Council, let me just be very clear, these are just thoughts. Uh, these are ideas, suggestions. My hope is, is, is through your feedback and the possibility of establishing, uh, perhaps, uh, a strategic, a strategic planning committee comprised of possibly a, a new council member and perhaps a, a member that was here before to help guide us as staff through the process. So I think, uh, those, those council members might, will be able to shed a lot of light on what would be important for, for you as a council to, 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 to consider as we develop uh, a, um, an agenda for the, uh, for their retreat. And as I mentioned, I, I, I thought it was important, uh, certainly for the new council, uh, to have a, a, a much better understanding of procedurally how things work. Uh, so, uh, we would, we would advocate bringing in a third party to help us facilitate this, this, uh, strategic planning session. But really, we'd go through a number of things, including the city charter, council agendas, how to get items on the agenda, types of meetings that we have, whether they be regular meetings, special meetings, work sessions. Um, you know, what, what it takes to, 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 what a quorum means to us, the order of business, uh, including executive sessions, work session agendas, regular meeting agendas, um, and then just a, a lot of procedural type stuff that I think is important uh, for any new council member to understand and, and, and do. Uh, there's a lot of things that you, as a council, have to be very cognizant of. Uh, you know, uh, how to make a motion, how to, how to deliberate, what the deliberate, the limits of deliberation might be. Um, there are other things, uh, the quorum, um, you know, Mayor, what's specifically your role, uh, responsibilities as the council? Uh, what does it mean, uh, when we talk about citizen participation? The council, a couple of years ago, adopted an ethics ordinance, so we, we probably need to look at that. Certainly, there's, there's, uh, uh, some discussion, I think, from a staff perspective on, on council staff relations. Uh, council and media relations, um, I, I think an open meeting refresher. And then I think what the real meat of a discussion might be is really defining the strategic direction that the council wants to go in. What's your vision? Um, you know, what, what are your expectation or deliverables? What are we good at? What is our core companies? What, what are, what are we not good at? And then, uh, this, uh, this exercise of setting goals for, uh, for what you want, uh, uh, this community to, to, to try and achieve. Uh, again, the goals will be important for not just, uh, the council, but certainly the staff. And then beyond that, just really talking and having a good discussion about planning for our future. Um, you know, much of the work that you see today at some point was discussed by previous councils. And so you will be tasked with the same thing, is, is trying to look beyond uh, currently where we are right now and looking five, ten, fifteen years down the road as to what we might need on a whole different, at, at various levels, whether that be infrastructure, whether that be water, and just really anything that the council feels is important. But, uh, again, uh, from, from our perspective, I think it, uh, it does a number of things, not, as I mentioned. Not only does it give the new council a good orientation for, uh, for how things are conducted at the city, but it really does allow you, the council, to really talk about those things that are important to you and those things that, uh, that, uh, you wanna see us work on as we progress into the next few years. Mayor, uh, again, again, those are just my thoughts, uh, but, um, uh, I, I, I'll be happy to answer any questions for the council. Uh, we can certainly jot down any ideas you have, and, and again, uh, if, if you may wanna consider setting up a small committee of two council members that can help staff develop this agenda for you.
Well, definitely. What time, but what, what, what are we looking for? I mean, as far as time-wise, uh, we're, we're looking for a, a Saturday, uh, morning.
I, I, I would highly suggest that this is a, an exercise of at least a day and a half, possibly two days.
Okay.
So certainly, whatever day the council wishes, um, we'll make that happen.
And then we'll, we'll be doing it at one, uh, local hotel. Um, does anybody have any questions and comments? This is a real good start. There's something I had asked Michael, uh, uh, definitely about. There is a, a lot of things that, uh, due to the lateness of the election, things of that nature, and the expedience of what we're facing. Uh, we've got a lot of things that we're facing now, and then, uh, and, and so, you know, it, it, so, you know, we have so many restrictions to have to deal with. Uh, you know, some of the things that we have to consider, uh, when doing the timing about, you know, doing it, you know, live, and we just have so many restrictions and, but we have so much that we, uh, you know, we need to, what, where are we gonna go, where we're at, and, you know, we've got, we've, we have so much to talk to, so. Uh, definitely, you know, putting the committee together, uh, we'll be talking about that, start considering who, who, who'd be best to, to put on this committee, work with the staff and come and formulate a, an agenda. And to get this thing going, uh, we're bringing, uh, uh, someone to be able to facilitate the whole thing. I've attended them in the past. Uh, I thought they were great. It really gave council, uh, a point in the horizon to, uh, to, to shoot for. And, and, and basically a game plan and, and almost like a checklist, you know, as we start, uh, addressing those issues. And also, you know, for future councils to consider, uh, and, and, and put ourselves in a, in a great place for future councils to be that. And I, I just think it, it, it is a way to be able to manage and be able to bring in and, and one shared vision of where, what, what we want to achieve. So, uh, anybody have any comments, any ideas, stuff like, take a good idea, not a good idea? Uh, really like to hear from everybody, if you don't mind.
I think it sounds like a great idea. I mean, it'd be a great way also for the new council members to, uh, get to know the other council members and just get to know the ropes. I mean, I, I, I think it's a great idea. I'm, I'm game for it.
I'm good for it. Just personally, I would prefer not a Saturday, but, you know, I, I.
But then, then, that's, yeah, that's not a problem. That's not a problem, you know?
Mayor Judge Hayes hustled us through the NPO meeting, so I'm back, I'm on here now. Can we start?
There you go.
That's right.
Well, when this is over, just hit the rewrite button and start over. You haven't missed much. So, Dietrich, have any, any comments? Any, uh, any thought process?
I think that it's a great idea, you know, to do these. Um, I know when they did that when, when I was first elected, and it was very beneficial to me, you know? Just, you know, having an outside person come in, then it's just fresh eyes, you know, looking at what we're seeing. Um, I don't, I, you know, looking at the list that Michael has together, I don't know that there's really much left that we would need to discuss. I don't, I don't, I just personally, I don't know that we need a committee to go back through that, uh,
Yeah.
bring someone else in. I think just, those are all good ideas.
The, 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 I, I would just like you to be able to add, add to, uh, to, to the members, uh, uh, and I think that's a great, great idea. I think that since, uh, Mark spoke up first, you'll be on it. And so, uh, you speak up first, you, that's. And, and, and so I'll leave it up to, uh, uh, Dietrich and, 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 uh, Mark to be able to decide either of them. And, and that's just basically, you know, i- if, if anybody else comes up with something that they wanna add in, it, it is quite an extensive list al- already. But, you know, uh, those items are basically not, we're gonna spend a lot of time, you know, hours, uh, discussing it, so I think it'll fa- go fairly quickly. Because I think we were already reading. But, uh, yeah, I think definitely we, we, we have, we have our two, and we'll go from there. So basically, all we gotta do is determine, uh, a location, uh, you know, we're talking about two days, which, which those two days are gonna be. And, you know, if, if preference over the weekend or the weekday, uh, and that's why Ms. Willis is on there. And so she'll push for her weekdays.
Ms. Willis is on there.
Dietrich.
Surprise.
You know, first, the, the, when, when the first two speak up, that's two committee members right there, you know, it's just, that's, basically, that's when you get voluntold right there. And so. And so, yeah, but you definitely, uh, uh, you know, uh, the sooner the better. And, uh, and so just, uh, get with staff and just work out the details and we'll make it happen.
Mayor?
Yes.
I did wanna point out that Councilmember Swanner is on the line.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
She's not having any questions.
Uh, she's, you have any questions?
She says it's a great idea, uh, but she is able to hear us, but not able to talk, so I just wanna make sure.
Well, you know, as well as in basic, well, we, we, we need, we need an incumbent, we need a new one, so, uh, since, uh, I, I already voluntold, you know, we can always switch it over to, uh, to Denise. So either way, we'll work it out and we'll get, uh, we'll get this, uh, we'll get the ball roped in on this. Uh, so any more questions? Any more, uh, comments on this, other than good idea?
I think it's a great idea, and those topics were good. Um, I, I was looking to make sure that we did have the open, um,
Open meetings?
Some legal stuff on there, yeah, and we did, so.
Good. Okay. Michael, great job on it.
Thank you for putting this up.
Okay, we're on, uh, item eight. And this is to consider the appointment of the municipal court judge. Uh, we are gonna make a motion and a vote on this. Basically, what I want to be able to do is, uh, I'll consider a motion to appoint Carlos Rodriguez to municipal court judge. Effective, the effective date would have gone into January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. I will entertain a motion in a second to appoint Carlos Rodriguez, uh, yeah, Carlos Rodriguez to municipal court judge. Do you have a motion in a second?
I make a motion that we.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Willis and a second by Councilman Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed indicate by saying nay? Vote, the motion passes. Uh, is Secretary on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so you did, uh, so the motion was made to, uh, make the effective date would have been, uh, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Yes.
Mayor, before you move on, for the record, I want, as I mentioned, this, Ms. Swanner is not able to, um, converse with us, but she did text that she was in favor, so.
Okay, so it, uh, so we have, uh, unanimous. Um, so the effective date will be proactive as of, uh, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And the motion was made by Councilman, Councilwoman Willis, seconded by Councilman Mata. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, be no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and a second.
Would make that motion?
Second.
Uh, okay, we had a motion by Councilman, uh, Sprouse, seconded by Councilman White. Is that correct? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed indicate by saying nay? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Everybody have a great evening, and we'll see you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Have a good night, have a good evening.
Thank you for everybody participating. You have a great evening.